Special meeting and work session to order, five o'clock Tuesday, April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Roll Carl, call Ferguson.
Here.
Hendrickson's absent. Ellsworth?
Yeah.
Kramer's here. Guns?
Here.
Okay, along with us, we have Jill and, God, I was gonna say Gail. I am gonna give this, I'm sorry. And Terry, and four people in the audience tonight, so thank you all for coming. Um, we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. A review of the current and agenda items. Um, we're called for changes. Only thing that I can think of at this moment is, under executive session, we have legal, personal, and contract, and I believe the only reason we're really coming in is for legal. Am I correct about that as far as you know, Terry?
And I asked Vicki about that. She said it's always listed like that, and then just when you go into executive session, you state what reason you're going into it.
Okay.
Those are the three reasons you can do it.
Can go in, yes. Yes, sir.
One of the things I noticed is on your agenda, you don't have no citizen input. And according to, I can read the, let's get right to you.
No, this is a work session, though.
But what it's, this is a special meeting. What it says, public comment is not required at official meetings held solely for the purpose of meeting an executive session and inauguration, swearing of the newly selected official, or presentation of a annual report to the government body, regardless of whether that activity takes place in the same meeting place or not. But the thing is, you're not going into exec, you're not having a special meeting, adjourned the special meeting, and then starting a work session. Therefore, work session is just part of this special meeting, and therefore you have to have citizen input. It's a class-two misdemeanor if you don't want to do it. Thirty days in jail, five hundred dollars.
I think that what you're saying-
I could use a thirty-day vacation.
Me too.
With pay?
With pay, yeah, wouldn't that be nice? Um, I, I, I don't see any reason why we can't adjourn after the special session and then reopen for a work session, and then it's legal, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. So on that note, that's how we will handle that. Um, so I need, I do need a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
I make a motion to accept the agenda as it was amended.
Thank you, Donna. Do I have a second?
So moved.
Thank you, Dan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, conflict of interest declaration. Everybody think we're okay, and if not, you'll state it when we're in the subject, please. Okay? So that will take us into executive session at, I have five oh four. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Dan. Second, please?
My second.
Thank you, Donna. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And this shall not take very long, folks. So, um, we'll come out and get you in whenever, five minutes.
Do I have to let him in?
Yes. Let him in. Get out of the way. She's opening the gate. As it is five twenty, I'll take a motion to come out of the executive session.
So moved.
Thank you. My second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you very much. There will be a, uh, motion coming out of executive session.
So moved.
Okay.
What's the motion?
The motion is to sign the-
Settlement agreement.
Settlement agreement with, to D A N R.
I second that motion.
Thank you, Donna. I need a new pen. Oh, this one has, thank you. It has a little bit in it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you very much, everybody. So I will adjourn this meeting, take a motion to adjourn this meeting at five twenty-one.
So moved.
My second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you. As it is now, five twenty-one, uh, we will go into a work session. We do have a few things on, on the agenda. The metering and technology solutions of the Beacon meters. Jill, I believe this is your department?
Oh, I don't know if this is really my department. We don't have any money to buy them, but I did want to mention that we did put in the budget a hundred thousand dollars for a Marshall, and we do not have a Marshall, so we could get meters instead.
Uh, it, the, it wasn't budgeted for this year, the meters?
The meters were.
They were budgeted, but were broke. Gotcha.
But we also did budget a hundred thousand dollars for a Marshall.
That we haven't used.
Right. I think we'll start with an M. I don't know, I just thought I'd put that up.
You're good. Hmm.
So is that money in the budget?
Well, I guess I have a feeling on that, and that is that I, I, I think it's an important issue. I think it would make the girls' jobs way easier, the office, in this office. And, and it would eliminate my job, which is not much of a savings, but, you know, a little bit.
Well, Chuck and I were talking about this cost at once, we were looking at it, and I believe when him and Bernie were looking at it, it was like thirty-three thousand.
Yeah, the very first time.
Keeps increasing.
We're gonna have to get them someday, and they're not gonna get any cheaper year after year.
Right.
You know, and I mean, next year, be, it might be another twenty-five thousand dollars onto them. So I, I really kind of think that's a good suggestion, Jill, that we look into using that Marshall money. I don't, I hate to see the law enforcement put it out, but yet we haven't really had anybody that, um, I don't know.
Hiring somebody right now is so difficult. We're not the only ones looking for a person.
And we're a small town, and we can't, we can't offer them a lot. And then any good one we think we got, then, you know, so I, I've-
You think it's a good idea?
I think it's a good idea.
Okay. Gal, you have an opinion on this?
Um, so when is the Marshall money earmarked from window in?
Our budget goes January through December.
Okay, so then, if we were to do this, then next December, then it would reset, then?
Then we redo.
So basically just out of Marshall until December if we chose to do this? Which we have no prospects anyways.
We'll be working on budgets this summer, so we'll be working on budgets by, by August.
But I mean, there's no prospects for a Marshall right now anyways, right?
Not right now, and, um, and it hasn't been an awful situation yet, thank God. I'm knocking on wood when I say that.
You know, and I, being on the law enforcement, I mean, I just, that one day, I just beat my head and I go. We have that allotted, but there's so many other places it needs to go.
Yep. So then I'll ask Terry. Um, uh, we discussed the, um, budget coming out, or the, the finances coming out, with the percentages on it? So that we know exactly where we are on each category? How close are we to getting one of those so that we can look at that?
Should have at the meeting.
At the next meeting? Okay. Well, then it would be my suggestion, um, we can't make any real decisions on a work session anyway, but it would be my suggestion that we look into that and see where we are percentage-wise on all categories. We may be zero on law enforcement, but we might be, you know, over two-hundred percent on sewer or whatever because of the tolling. And so I think we should check into that and, and then give this a better look. And maybe, maybe we need to wait, I mean, we're, May first tomorrow?
Yeah.
July first is only two months down the road, and then we'd be halfway through the year, which would, you know?
Well, if we could get them tied in at that point.
If we could get it tied in, yes. Dan, you had a comment, question?
And I think we need to wait before we go on any of the monies, because we've got the rest of our Lagoon project yet, we've got the rest of the W R T project yet, and to me, them are by far more important than the meters. And I still feel on the meter situation, we still need to look at going back and looking at the monies with Anthony on getting loan grant for the booster, for the meters, and for the sewer repairs that we need to do for infrastructure in the community. If we're gonna do that, then we'd apply and go with that route. But these extra monies that we've got left in there, you know, we've had several times it was stated the sky is falling, and we gotta hold our budgets, which we do. And in the circumstances of that, we also need to wait with this new treatment center possibly coming forward. We don't know what agreements are gonna be brought up on that circumstance. We might need some down on that. The W R T, we haven't got final numbers on that yet. We may need, we're hoping we can use some of the loan money on what we've got on that grant.
Right.
Or, and I should say, loan package we've got there right now.
Right.
So I definitely think we need to hold back our horses until all of them are seen and the rest of that all folds out.
And the next thing I was gonna say was that Anthony was going to be looking into that, uh, grant possibilities for that. And so, um, while we're, um, waiting for the-
I just think we should have it in the back of our mind.
Percentages, while we're waiting for the percentages and, um, wait for maybe, like I said, that, that two-month period, get halfway through the year, and then maybe we'll have a better idea on the cost of some of these projects, a little bit too, maybe?
Hopefully I've got Anthony looking at that W R T closer.
Yep, he's supposed to be, I believe, so, um, yeah, I, I think that's, I think that's all good input. Everybody agree?
Yep. Suggest we move on.
Okay, move on. Very, uh, you did have something, Jerry, or did I cover it?
Well, no, there's one thing that, it seemed like the last time we bring up and talked about this, the legal, the lawyer, was pretty adamant, according to the regulation, that it had to be paid by the citizens.
The meters did?
Yeah, because of the way the ordinance is written. Should be go back and listen to that, to that meeting, so.
Do you, do you know when that was? I don't, I don't recall that at all, so I'm asking.
No, that's one of the things we were bringing up, talked about it, then he went back and re-looked at it, and he said that, no, it needs to be, he needs to be out of it. So you might want to look at him, look at it that way, because you gotta be able to justify why you didn't follow your ordinance or just vote to not follow it.
Yes. Donna?
I, I do remember that, but on the same token, we were saying, why should, why should we, as a homeowner, have to buy a meter or the renter? I mean, you know, when we don't, you know?
That was what the, yeah. Now I remember it.
Yeah, I remember that now.
But Mitch's thing was still adamant that it needed to be the people who own the properties that purchased them. Because that's how they do it on all the meters.
Okay. Chuck?
I had quite a lengthy conversation with, uh, Rural Water, and of course, they deal with this statewide. And, uh, the city of Lead just went back through and put all brand-new meters in, every house. And they belonged to the homeowner.
The homeowner paid for them? Or they weren't?
That's kind of the way it came about, however, you know, Lead has Deadwood, Hill City, Keystone, they all have more gross revenue than we do, and that one thing and other. My feeling was on it that that is a device that measures the amount of water that we sell. So consequently, then you run into a situation when the meter freezes and breaks, or it quits working, or, you know, some of these meters are in meter pits, not even in the homes. And I honestly feel that the town should own the meters.
Should own the meters?
Because it isn't any different than a gas station or anything else. That gas pump meters the gas that they're buying and selling at a profit. You know, the, the, the water is free. It's the cost of getting it to the houses is what costs the money. The wells, the, and make no mistake, there's gonna be a day that we're gonna get a water bill from the state because they already claim the aquifers, and that's why you have permits for drilling wells and one thing and other, tapping into that water source. And so I believe that sooner or later, even like bringing water out of Missouri, they're gonna charge you so much a gallon or a thousand or whatever for that water. This is our means of knowing what to charge the individuals for the water they're using.
Yep.
And it's not a huge investment. We figured out there are about two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a crack at our cost. But when you have a meter that's in a situation that is not in the person's house, it's in a meter pit out in the street, how can you possibly charge that homeowner for that meter that's out in the street? So there's a whole different variety of things here that can come into play on, you know, when you have a meter that goes bad, you're gonna charge the homeowner another two-hundred-and-fifty bucks for another meter? They only paid for one. You know, so we've been pretty lucky. We ran in for one today that, uh, the bottom, the generator was bad, but I actually had two brand-new ones in a box that, uh, did not work. So there is, uh, situations when brand-new ones don't work, you know?
Yep.
But I feel, um, over forty years of dealing with these meters, many, many years ago, I went back and standardized with Badger brand meters, because they are compatible with every upgrade that we make. We, once we did the, the, the generators, and then the top part, uh, the readers, and all of that stuff has been compatible for the last thirty years. When I came on board, uh, in the eighteen hundreds, the, you know, we had four or five different kinds of meters, and you just couldn't keep, you know, you get one meter, one head, and one cut pad, it fits everything in there, other than the commercial meters, they're different obviously. But we were using the plastic bottoms. There's about ten-dollar difference between the plastic bottoms and the brass. There are some advantages to each of them. We had one that actually, the bottom of it rusted out. And how, how can that possibly be the homeowner's problem? So I, I just feel that it's very important and wise that the town owns the meters.
Well, we will definitely take all of that into consideration. I understand what you're saying. Um, I, I, at, with the knowledge that I have right now, I would have to agree with you. But like I said, when we go into that-
Part of it is measuring the product that we're selling.
Right, exactly.
End of story.
Yep. Okay. Jerry?
I think the points Chuck was making are very good points. Uh, the only thing is that if we're gonna do it that way, then the ordinance needs to be changed.
Needs to be re-changed, yes.
Because it wasn't clear at one point in time, and then it came back and it says, no, it's all meters, and so the ordinance just needs to be changed.
Correct, along with several others. Yep, yes.
So are, is the ordinance that you're talking about, um, in the public, public works section under meters?
Yep.
Right here it says, oh, so I'm reading it's fifty-point-oh-two. All connections shall be metered, the town will provide the meter.
Correct.
So is that?
But if you go back down just a little lower than that, and that's where it got into an issue last time, uh, and then Mitch made, uh, declared, uh, the determination that people had to buy their own meters.
Okay. All right.
And that issue just came up a little while ago with a couple different meters and stuff, so. All I'm saying is, I think what Chuck is saying is very good. We did, the ordinance just needs to match it so it's, so it can be good for everybody. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, very good. Let's, um, move on then. Um, that brings us to the conflict of interest.
No, we still have, we still have-
Oh, no, we still have this, yes. Sorry, go ahead, Jill.
Yeah. So on November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, um, there was a motion made and seconded to charge the minimum charge for water sewer connections for all connections to the water and sewer systems, even if the water taps are turned off for any period of time. If the property owner does not want to pay these charges, then the meter will be removed and the service capped and separate from the town's system at the property owner's expense. When the property owner decides to reconnect to the town's water system, they will be required to pay a new sewer tap and new water tap at the rate in effect at that time. Um, I'm having a hard time moving forward with this because I have seventy properties here that I do not have the knowledge to go around and decide if there is a water or sewer tap there. I would need Chuck's help with that. And if we're gonna do this, I need a timeline, I need his help on him doing it, and then I need to get letters out to everybody and let them know that we are going to start doing that. Because it's now May, and this went into effect November twenty-first.
Right.
So my question is, who's gonna be removing the meters if they don't? Is that gonna be Chuck? And he's gonna cap them off? That's gonna be Chuck? Is that part of his contract? Is he gonna be charging us for that? Um, and then to bill the citizen? We're gonna bill the citizen to do that? Um, I think we need to come up with some type of cost and let them know in advance that this is coming their way, because their people are gonna be pissed off. Um, and then a timeline, I want a timeline where all this is gonna get done.
Okay, board members, questions, comments?
Well, I think the timeline thing's gonna be, you know, uh, depends on what else is going on in town, you know?
I get that.
You know, it's, uh, I guess-
Chucky, you have any input over there?
Sure.
Are you awake?
I think probably the intentions were good, except if, if, I would say there's an exception if there is a meter on that property. If the curb stop is there and the curb stop is off, that's the end of the story. Because you're going to have, especially in new developments, that until the water is actually furnished to that property and the house burned down, or they move away, or something happens, once that's terminated at the curb, that's the end of the story. When they come back and want water, that's the time to get in their neckers.
Okay, I agree with that, but up until now, are you gonna go around?
Once that water's shut off at the curb, then there is negotiations on how they're gonna get water again, and how they're gonna meter it and that kind of stuff. Because I understand it's extra revenue, but you're targeting a very minute amount of people. Like in my case, I would not want to own thirty lots that has curb stops to them and paying, because the way the ordinance reads, that the developer puts the water lines in and that kind of stuff. So at that point, until they're turned over to the town, it's moot.
Okay, Dan?
And I wasn't at this meeting when the motion was made, and then that's when I brought it up after the fact. But the aspect, I'd like to say, we talked about it in the last work session, that what we were gonna do was research what we were doing in Keystone, Hot Springs, Rapid City, and I got a chance to talk to Rapid City. Didn't get the call back from the others or confirmation of what I needed to know from them. They're gonna get that information and get it back to us. But, you know, in these circumstances, they have an empty lot that has water to it, they don't charge for it, because they're not using anything. But if they have a circumstance where an individual goes somewhere south and has their water shut off, like the city of Rapid City, then they charge a minimum for that individual to be gone. It's not the full water bill amount, but they charge a minimum. And then when they shut it off, they charge them a fifty-dollar shut-off fee. When they come back, they charge them a fifty-dollar turn-on fee. But through the winter months, then however long they're gone, whether it's, she's gonna send me that sheet, whether it's forty bucks a month for their minimum, or fifty bucks, or whatever that is while they're gone, they still charge that minimum. Their water bill may be eighty bucks a month, so they're charging roughly fifty percent of it to have that. And that's how they work their circumstances and them other, in that particular circumstance in Rapid. But if they have empty lots and they do the taps, there isn't anything charged to anybody until exactly what Ferguson said, that, till you got a meter and a house built, you don't start charging, just because that developer's coming in and he's paid his tap fee to do the development and to hook in. But now it's each individual lot is what it's been, what it's always been through that. But to go through every empty lot in the town, or any empty home, or any empty situation, the water's been shut off for twenty-plus years, now we're gonna go back and start charging them?
Did you have something?
Um, I mean, I'm not sure what the purpose was behind this, but, um, it just kind of seems, I, I, I kind of am thinking along the same lines as Dan, because it just seems like for water, like it should be a usage-based charge, and if it's an empty property and it can't use water, then why should they be paying for it? That's just-
I'll, I'll tell you the reasoning that was put behind this. And that was, the pipes are there, and, and they're, they're up to each property. They can be used. Um, they were at one time used on some of the properties. And so whether there's a difference on something that doesn't have a pipe going to it or not, you know, do we talk about that? I, I'm not sure. Um, this has been a subject of conversation on and off for ten years or better. Um, and this decision was made, um, not long ago.
November twenty-first. And then before that, we went back on February twentieth, twenty twenty, water shut off at curb stop and curse, no charges and no monthly fee, only turn-off and turn-on fee, which will be increased to fifty dollars. Motion made. That's when we decided that in February twenty, twenty twenty. Then November, we went back to this.
Changed, changed.
Which I don't care what we do, but I need, I need help.
You need, yeah, I understand that.
Okay.
Did you have a question, Jerry?
Yes. Uh, one of the things, when you look at the minimum amount that's charged, there's been homes that have been moved, there's been lots where they've had mobile homes and stuff on them in the past, and there's loans that have been taken out, and those- And there's loans that have been taken out, and those where there used to be a home and now there isn't, those were part of the, when you go to get a loan, just like when we're gonna finalize.
Surcharge.
There's a surcharge and there's a certain number of homes dedicated to it.
Yep.
So that would have to be, if you look at the minimum charge to cover that. Uh, you know, it hasn't been like Dan said, it's the last twenty years, no, because it was instituted when Bobby first came on. And they did it, Bobby and I believe you were one of the spearheads on that one, and Mitch, because what they do in Keystone is they get charged. Now, does it need some more massaging, like, like you mentioned, is that, you know, how you do it? But the big thing is, if you look at the power company, you know, you know, I sold my campground over there, but over there, I had eight, I think it was eight different uh transformers coming into my property, this served all of the stuff.
One call.
And and then one of the, one of the things is, when the power company, I get charged every meter a certain amount, now it's not what the minimum amount is, but for, you know, every kilowatt, say it's a seventy-five kilowatt generator, I gotta pay this, the hundred and fifty uh transformer I need. So whether you pay, like Dan says, you go back and pay the whole thing, or you re-look at that and decide what is good, because someone has to pay for the water and sewer.
Absolutely.
Lines, and there's maintenance, in order to pay Chuck's contract, there has to be money coming in. And what, so what you're not paying for what you're using, you're paying, just like the electric company, I'm paying to have that power set in there when I need it.
Exactly.
And that's kind of the deal behind that, so.
Thank you, Jerry.
I just don't see the need for why we would need to remove the meter and cap the service. Uh, it just seems like, why is it not sufficient to just turn the water off at the valve? That's just kind of my question on that.
Oh, let me get to Chuck first.
Well, you have two different situations here. If you've got a vacant lot, the curb stop runs up to that point, that is the point of entry. So consequently, if there's a dwelling on that property, then you can justify the monthly rate. I don't care if they're going to Florida, or Alaska, or where they're going. But there is two different situations there, if the lot is not developed and it's shut off at the curb, even though it's available, it has, it is not meter-ready. So if somebody moves out of a, a spot, if there's a dwelling there, then it's, it's capable of using the water. Just because they're not using it, doesn't mean that, you know. So there's two different situations there, if the lot's bare, I don't think anybody wants to pay fifty dollars a month for a bare lot. You know, if you've got several lots, I mean, you could have a three hundred dollar a month water bill and nobody lives there. So that's the two different situations that you have. If there's a dwelling on that property, then I can physically see you charging year-round for that. It's not the town's fault that it isn't occupied.
Okay, Dan?
And I think too, on the meter pits that are at these empty lots, like I have several of them. I probably pertaining to a lot of this situation when it was brought out. But it's a circumstance where if I go to develop any of them lots, I'm gonna have to dig all of that up and redo everything before I go forward anyway. I'm not going to trust anything that's in that ground now. And I'm gonna dig back to the main on them properties to make sure that line is adequate before I go there. Why would I, as I did on any of the other properties, set myself up for failure? So why do I wanna pay a fee on them lots when I'm gonna dig back and judge that? Is the meter still probably in the pit? Yeah, it is. But it's been shut off for, oh, like them lots over there, thirty years.
Yeah.
You know, that I've never used them. But now I'm gonna get charged because there's a meter in that pit. And like I say, if I go to develop them lots, there used to be four trailers there, well, I'm not going to use any of them old existing lines, I'm gonna go back to the one main and I'm going to hook everything up and go back to the main and make sure I've got a secure line before I develop that lot out, as I would any of the other lots. So that's why exactly it needs to be looked at and readjusted and and I agree, if you've got a, a resident that is able to have a property or uh, ability for the waters to be used, there should be a minimum charge if they have that shut off. You know, just as if they're going out of town or going somewhere, they still have that right to reserve it. But on the other circumstance, then you have your shut-off and turn-on fees that you have also, that you're gonna collect every time that's available.
Now, as a comment here, our loans that we have, we do have, that we have surcharges on, it was on the amount of homes that was here at the time. And, and uh, we do charge that same fee to any new one coming in. Um, but, and the new loans will be the same way, it'll be to what we have for users now. Not what we have for users in ten years, and not, not what's in the ground either. Not, not those lots that are, are not built on, that those are not counted in the surcharges. Um, so we do have to keep an eye on that and make sure that we are getting the set amount even if somebody moves off of their property or what, whatever, I, I agree with that too. And so that'll have, we'll have to keep an eye on that. Um, that'll probably give Jill a little more work, sorry honey. Um, but yes, that does need to be done. You have another question? I'll be right with you, Mark.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on what you're saying, for example, I've demoed two places over here on this new property I bought that had water service to them. One of them doesn't have, nobody there now. I'm gonna demo the house, I'm sure how Terry's house was part of figuring in what we have to pay as a minimum amount, and there's a federal law, if you go back and read when we sign off on, when we had to sign off and say that, yeah, we're going to make sure we bring in this amount of money and put it in a special account. So that has to be done, and I know that there's been probably six, six homes that don't exist anymore. Whether it was a trailer house, or a mobile home, whatever that is gone now, that they played into that role. So, so we don't get in trouble federally, somehow, that, that, you, you can't just say, okay, this is all, you know, it was, say it's based on three fifty. And now we got three forty-two. Well, at three fifty, we gotta be putting that three fifty times whatever it was, twelve dollars, or whatever it was, into that special account.
But we have new homes that are taking over that.
Yeah. But you just got, well, I'm saying, you just gotta make sure that that amount gets into there.
Yes, agree, yep, yep.
Alright. Hypothetical, just so I understand what's going on.
Okay, that's fine.
I go out of town for two months. Florida, wherever, I wanna seal my house up. I say I would like you to come shut my, my curb stop off. What do you charge me to do that?
Fifty dollars.
Yeah.
And then when I come back, you're gonna charge me fifty again to turn it back on?
And then the thing that was done in twenty twenty, you would not be getting a water or sewer bill?
Okay, but now we're talking, I'm gonna pay fifty dollars to shut, shut it off, fifty dollars to turn it on, and I'm gonna pay a monthly maintenance fee for water I'm not using?
Correct.
No, that's not the way to set up. The way that motion was, there was no fee to shut it off or turn it back on. It would just, it would just be.
But we sent Chuck over there to do that as part of this work, so.
But that, turn that on and off is different than when it's off.
Yeah.
Permanently. Because.
You don't understand and.
No, I do, I just have more.
Okay.
Was, was gonna go on. So are, are you guys still debating taking meters off property?
That is what the ordinance tells us to do right now. That is what the, what the, the, not the ordinance, right, I'm sorry, the motion.
Because some of these meters are on private property.
Correct.
And if the city damages that private property, the city could be liable in a way that could cost the city a great deal of money. If you break my water line, pass the meter on my side, basically I can charge you whatever I want for you to fix that.
I understand that. That is why I think that this, we need to look at this again, this.
I believe we need to break everything down and decide if we're still gonna move forward with doing that or not. And if we are moving forward with it, we need to have a plan and a timeline to get it done.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
One more little.
Yeah, go ahead.
Couldn't most of all this be avoided by raising your shut-off and turn-on fees? Raise it to a hundred bucks and call it a wash?
And call it a wash, that's an idea.
Deal with liability, you don't have to deal with anger, I, nobody's gonna wanna pay for a product that they're not receiving.
Right.
If they're not flushing stuff down the sewer and they're not running water, I'm sorry, but I mean, if, if that house across the street gets foreclosed on, are you gonna build a bank? No, you, because you'll never see a dime of it.
Right.
That would be a suggestion, raise your fees, raise your tap fees. They're either gonna continue to pay their service, or they're gonna pay the fee.
They're gonna pay the fee. Okay, thank you for your input. Thanks, Dan?
See, and the other part of this is, if it's shut off and then they don't wanna pay a service charge, then it's capped, meter's removed, then they wanna turn it back on, then they've gotta pay a complete another tap fee.
Yeah.
So it's not only gonna piss you off that they shut your water off, and then you said, I'm not gonna pay a service charge, then you wanna turn back on, you gotta pay a thousand dollar tap fee to get that meter back, to start your water back up again. And that's where I had the problem with it, is like, whoa, whoa, whoa. You know, if you're gonna pull this service and disconnect it because I'm not going to hook up or wanna pay a service fee, and now you're gonna charge me a new tap fee too? You talked about having a bunch of rebels pissed off because they're doing that. That's ridiculous, and that's where I had the biggest problem too, was on that section of it also.
Go ahead.
I didn't understand that part, I guess.
So if you guys do go and you pull the meter and you put it on, you would have to pay the thousand dollar tap fee again? So if I, if, if we have fifty residents in Hermosa, in Hermosa area, that, that winter somewhere else?
Uh, uh, this is not concerning the wintering people. This is more concerned about, I'll, I'll give you a piece of property, the one that always sticks in my mind. Mills own it, and it's uh, a block away from yours, it's on Vila Street. It's been empty ever since I have lived here, which has been since eighty-eight.
Is there a home on it?
There is a home on it, it's never been lived in, I mean, they use it for storage. The reason that it has not lived in or rented, to my knowledge, is because there's a spring that runs right through there, and that house used to always fill with water, the, the crawl space or basement, whatever. And um, it, yeah, so it has not been lived in. But it has got the water, the meter, the, the hookup to it, everything. And, and that, it's basically those properties that have, have brought this discussion to here. And, and yet I do believe there needs to be more discussion and more thought process on this myself. Go ahead.
Just seems to me that if it, I mean, if there's problem properties around here, wouldn't that be more of an abatement thing, rather than we make a I mean, if there's sitting water underneath something for a long period of time?
They, they had a sub pump, and they were constantly pumping it out, and the fact also now, um, since the school added on, they moved that spring, they moved how that spring flows, and it doesn't flow down there like it used to.
And the maintenance of the house too, that lot had deteriorated way back in the day, and it would have never been habitable, but
Right.
If I may, can I read this to those that came in late to understand it?
You may, you may, Dan, thank you.
What the motion was made on this is to approve back in twen- sixth of twenty twenty-three, surcharge for improvements to the sewer system. Um, votes were all ayes on that. Motion made in second to charge a minimum charge for water sewer connections for all connections to the water and sewer systems, even if the water taps are turned off for any period of time. If a property owner does not want to pay these charges, then the meter will be removed and the service capped and separated from the town's system at the property owner's expense. When the property owner decides to reconnect to the town's water system, they will be required to pay a new sewer tap and a new water tap at the rate in effect at the time. All decisions to disconnect will be recorded in G-Works discussion. So that's why I say, if you disconnect and, and go with this, you're paying water and sewer tap if you disagree to pay a maintenance fee or any fees at all while this is shut off, and that's why I argued at this point and said, you gotta be kidding me.
Boy, I got all kinds of hands, I'm gonna take Jill first.
Um, I think, um, on top of having a whole bunch of people that are just plain pissed off, I'm also gonna bring Chuck into this, how much extra work this is gonna be for Chuck to go do all that. And how many people that we bill after we get a bill from Chuck are actually gonna pay that.
Okay, done?
Well, I know, in fact, Mills is over there, I know that we can go take that meter out anytime.
They wouldn't care?
Yeah, they don't care.
They wouldn't care.
And Rick says if, they, they, cause his, his niece is planning on building in there eventually, he said she'll just have to pay the tap fee. He said, you know, that's not.
Yeah, I know he wouldn't care, but that's, that is what, you know, one of the things that stirred this, so. Okay, Mark, you have something else?
You had mentioned that this isn't for the winter bonds.
Well, it, it wasn't supposed to be, but the way that is written, it sure sounds like it, doesn't it?
It, it definitely does, and I think if you your problem's gonna be, if, if this becomes a policy, you can't, you can't pick and choose, or you're gonna get sued again.
Exactly, correct.
I, if, I, I, I do believe if, if everybody works around it, there's probably a really easy
Way out.
Solution to this.
Okay. Thank you, Mark.
Table it until.
Uh, well, just a minute, Jerry had one more time?
Yeah, the intent of that, and Dan made a good point, the four board members who were present and voted on, they all voted for it. The intent, and then you go back and look at, say you have a, uh, you work out, you live out in a township, you have a road uh, fee that you have to pay. And, okay, I'm gonna be gone for six months out of the year, so I'm only gonna pay for that road fee for six months, well, no, you gotta pay for it all the time because the road is there whether you're using it or not.
Right.
Now, whether you charge the, the full amount, what bring this back up is when Bobby came back and worked part-time, Bobby goes, what happened? Why isn't this still going on? And then you go back through it, I think the motion you're talking about was made in a, in a work session. There was a motion in a work session, which you can't really do, that got rid, that changed it, but it doesn't have to be what is there, you guys have the opportunity to change that. But the intent is that Chuck has to repair those lines. And therefore, say an example, uh, Dan has a house on one corner, I have the three lots on the other. And say I never do anything with the three lots, I take the house down, don't do anything, he doesn't do anything there. Well, the rest of town is paying to make sure that line, if there's a break in it, has to be repaired. So the intent is, you know, maybe not charge the full amount, maybe not do the meters, but the intent is that they're, just like the electric company, you don't
Right.
Well, you, you
I understand, thanks.
Have the opportunity to have.
On that note, I agree with you, I, I see what you're saying, I understand what everybody's saying, I believe this needs to be reworked. I think that we need to
Put it on the next agenda, then resend that.
Resend this motion and then, and then redo it. And does everybody sitting here feel that same way?
Yes.
We have a yes, a yes, and a yes, and a yes. Okay, so please put that on the next agenda, and we will resend that, and then we will work that through. No, that, that has to be, to be voted on, it'll be at the next meeting. So next Tuesday night, we'll vote to resend this motion and start over to, okay. On a, on a new process. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you, Jill, for bringing that up, we understand what a problem that was for you.
Looks, it's very complicated.
Yes. Yep, gotcha. All right, moving on then. Um, now we're on the code of conduct policy. I still have the question that, um, as I recall, our attorney, Mitch, had wanted us to read one that, that they had just put into effect, policy and code of conduct for, um,
Keystone.
Keystone. And I still can't find a copy of that. So I would like to basically make this pending until we get that copy. Um, if you would please contact him, have him email you, and if you would make us out each a copy. And rather than waiting till a work session, if you would call everybody and say you have it, um, then we can maybe look at it beforehand, and, and everybody can maybe come up with some ideas. Okay?
Okay.
And I think it'd be good, once we read it, to have Mitch there.
Oh, I agree. I agree, this is a, this is a, a legal matter, and, and, good job, Donna.
Bless you.
Um, this is, this is a legal matter, and I believe he should be present for these conversations also. Okay, thank you. Next is, um, the vendor permit fees. This is, you know, this has been a little bit of an issue. I think we have it all handled for this year, don't we? Isn't everything decided for this year, or do you still have an up and coming thing that you had questions about?
Um, yeah, we have some questions about our, a little bit of our July one.
Okay.
And the fireworks, and a little bit more with the August one.
Right.
Vendor fair.
Okay, so your question again about the July one, let's go with that first.
So what all got waived there for the fees?
The vendor fees.
And was it just the twenty-five, or the five percent off, or was it the whole amount?
That was for last year, that we made, I made that motion. Because you guys were still getting charged, and that was your thing for last year. And we waived that, so that you could correct last year. Because that was hanging over yet, and we said, no, we're not gonna go there. Then it was brought up, we were gonna discuss it, after what we did with Hermosa Connet's. If we were gonna waive that five percent again, for their fireworks standards, what you were after, weren't you?
No, we paid our five percent last year. We did. The motion was made to waive it this year, so we don't know if that was twenty-five dollar a day or just the five percent.
Four of the five percent. Uh.
Okay.
Can you, what meeting was that at that we made that motion? Was that last meeting, or two, or was that at a work session?
Eighties or four.
It was March eighteenth or seventeenth.
Oh, aren't you good, we'll look that up, thank you. Your memory's better in mind, dear, and I appreciate that a lot.
Yeah, the motion was made at that time to waive the five percent. And after it was voted on, there was further discussion about going back and relooking at it to make it just for everybody. But there was a motion made, and it was voted on and approved to waive the five percent for this year.
At the March?
March, uh, seventeenth, maybe?
So he goes Asian eighteenth?
Nineteenth was the meeting date.
Nineteenth was the meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, cuz we had quite a discussion that night about it. And I made the motion to waive it.
Motion made to remove the five percent gross sales fee from the permit for this particular incident. Note second motion failed. Motion made in second to eliminate the five percent gross sales fee, the board will go into the next work session to change the fee standard so that it reflects it straight across the board. Discussion, vote, one day, three days, motion carried.
So it was the five percent?
It was the five percent.
Not the fee, Jill?
Are we getting ready the five percent always on here then? Do I need to change that?
No, I.
I think it was just at this time.
Firework, that's only for the fireworks.
Yep.
What the motion said is you guys go back and see what's gonna be forever.
Forever, right, and that is where the discussion is at this now. Still.
Does that answer your question?
It, it, that did answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
For that one, yeah.
For that one, okay. So then let's go ahead and have the question for the next one before we talk any further about this.
So for the next one, cuz now I got three events this summer, and all of them are different prices, so I'm trying to see how you guys are gonna make it more consistent
Okay.
in the future, cuz it's a little weird having to come to you guys every single time for the fees.
Agreed, yeah.
It's hard for me, especially like the August one, I have to not tell my vendors, I even, now we have a couple registered, but it's already coming up, and I have to go back and tell them.
What's different, yeah. So you, you have three events this year, that is the, um, the June one, and then Fourth of July, and then you have something in August.
Your turn.
And the June one is said, done, taken care of, we don't have to worry about that, correct?
Correct.
And that was a zero fee, as I recall. And, so now we have the, only the twenty-five dollar a day fee for,
Oh, okay.
is what is on the records now for July, and nothing for August? Or it's still the twenty-five dollar? How does that, how does August work?
Technically, it's twenty-five dollars plus the five percent.
Plus the five percent for that, okay?
Well, I, uh, depending on which document you look at. If you look online, it's only five percent for the monthly. It doesn't say for the other, that's where it's a little bit confusing. In one form, it does kind of, is on the form that we had, it was confusing, cuz it kind of almost looks like five percent on top of any of those fees. But if you look at the form online, the new schedule fee that I found, it does say five percent only for the monthly, and it's very clear that way. So, that's where, you, you know, that, not the new schedule fee, so I would take that as, okay, that's maybe what it needs to be.
Dan, you have a comment?
I read it as the monthly is the eight hundred plus the five percent, nothing for five percent on the seven day or the one day.
Yep. And if you look at the schedule fee, it's more clear, without a little bit confusing. Somebody took it as five percent for any of those, but if you look at the schedule fee online, it does make it very clear, monthly, five percent, I'd be, I don't know, there's nothing for percentage.
Jill, question, comment?
I did look up a couple, um, different vendor fees for other towns, and some of them had just a yearly thing that you would just flat pay, and you could have.
Whatever you wanted, whatever you wanted.
So I don't know if that would be something maybe we need to look into. Um, that way he could put on as many events as he wants, and they'll just be a one hundred fee for the year, instead of doing it this way.
I see, cuz otherwise, every time I have an event, I would ever do it monthly, that's a lot of stuff coming your way every month.
It's a lot of time for you too, that, you know.
Well, and quite frankly, when the vendors see what it is, they won't do it, or we don't make money, so either way, it doesn't work.
Right.
You know, that, that's what it comes down to, it just, it's kind of expensive, so.
Okay.
And the town loses the sales tax.
Right, exactly.
So, I would say, think about doing a straight across the board vendor fee for, like them, because they are one, uh, one spot, I mean, you know.
They are always there.
Yeah, right, yeah. I think that's something that we should look into and offer that to them.
Okay, Dan, you?
Yeah, we need to have Jill pull that, and see, if we can check, I don't know who you checked with, but like Hot Springs.
I did Sturgis, Hot Springs, a whole bunch of them. I did notice too that a couple of them had like transient vendor fee, and then some of them had separate things just for food trucks.
Okay.
So I'm wondering.
That'd be nice to have that.
I, I guess this is what I will ask, we'll move this to another work session, sorry. Um, unless, do you need a, do you really need an answer right now? Oh, you can't have it right now anyway, it would be at the next meeting, but, but.
Uh, the sooner the better for the August one, just cuz that's coming up fast.
Okay, so go ahead and put that on, on the agenda for next Tuesday night's meeting. And Jill, if you would please, and make a spreadsheet, and say, we wanna know the town because we wanna compare size, and also, um, sales tax possibilities and all that. The town's name, the size of the town, we can kind of figure that out ourselves. And for each permit that they're discussing, or zero permit fees, so if you have your food trucks, your, you know, craft shows, uh, yeah, transits, all that, and, and then we'll discuss this at the next work session. Uh-huh, go for it.
Sturgis and Hot Springs, they are tourist towns too, so they have a lot more going for them.
Oh, that's why I said that. It's a total different ballgame. Uh, you, we are in probably different circumstances than any town in this state. Because of our proximity to Rapid City, to a big city, and then the proximity to all the small and definitely more tourist towns that have that tax income that we do not have. So we, we have to look at things a little differently, and, um, and we don't wanna lose our tax revenue that, that it would be bringing to us. That's, that's a good thing for the town, so we will consider all that, and you will of course be informed uh, when the, when the meeting is, the next work session, so you can be here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay?
I'll work on that.
Thank you. Next is the garbage. Am I right? Am I, yep, garbage ordinance.
Nobody calls until it's.
Yeah, that's the way it always works.
Yeah, well, it could be one call, one two, so.
Yeah, yeah. Well, this has been a, this has been another one that's been on the agenda many times over and been changed many times over. Um, you can see that by the dates and the paperwork that is here for it. Um, right now, we have, the thought process was to totally change that again, and yet it seems kind of like almost a waste when you consider how much that sign down there cost us.
And how much time.
And how much time we actually spent researching that, and debating that, and contacting other towns to see how they dealt with it. Um, hey, thank you guys very much for coming today. Um, there, the biggest issues seem to be whether or not people that live out of town limits are able to use the yard waste dumpster. And also, the people in town that, that do not pay a garbage fee, whether they can use those dumpsters. I, I am a firm believer, and this is just me, but I'm gonna say my opinion, I am a firm believer that if you are not within the town limits, that is a privilege that you don't get, if you're not within the town limits. Um, we had research done on it, whether or not the dumpster fees were a part of the garbage service fees, or a part, or a sec, separate line item on the budget. And I think we had it figured out that it is a separate line item on the budget. So it does not concern the garbage fees whatsoever for the dumpsters. That is a service that, I don't remember who all was on the board at the time, I know Dan was on the board. I believe maybe it was Terry, Vicki, um, I, I think, um, that, that brought that to us. They, they decided that it would be good for the town, and it would help to keep the town cleaner, and blah, 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 and it was their decision at that time to have the yard waste dumpsters, and also, as I recall, to do the yearly cleanup. At one time, it was even discussed, did we also do it one time in the fall? Or did it never happen?
In the beginning.
In the beginning, it was done in the fall also, so you had a spring cleanup and a fall cleanup. The expenses, I mean, they, they charge us per dumpster, per drop.
Per ton.
Per ton. So it, it, it's not just a, the same charge for the dumpster each time, no matter, you know, what, what is in it. And if it was like that, it, it would be easier to say, yeah, anybody can use it. But the fact of the matter is, it costs us for, for that service. And, like I said, I am, I will just say it, I am a firm believer that if you are not within the town limits, that you, that is something you're not privy to. And I realize they are right, I mean, right there, town limits is here, and they are right there, I get that. But I also understand that those properties are three acres, or two acres, or one acre, and, and they could have a little corner of their own yard, or their own acre, just for a compost pile. And it would benefit them, you know, when it, when it's made, when it's done, it would benefit them. Whereas in the town, we have many lots that are still the sixty by a hundred, or a hundred and twenty-five. They don't have the space, you know, other than for a little bitty kitchen composter. It's not like they can put, if their great big cottonwood trees come down, like they can put it all in a spot and, and have it compost within a few years. That, that won't happen in those small lots. And, and that is part of the reasoning for that also. I'm gonna quit there and let's have some other opinions. Anybody?
So, anybody that does not have garbage pickup cannot use the dumpster?
Not as it is right now. As it is right now, the dumpsters have nothing to do with the garbage pickup because it's a separate line item on the budget. It is not the fees that come from the garbage service that pays those bills. It is the taxes, the, that we generate, the fees for water, whatever. It's an other fee rather than the garbage fee.
It's just a privilege that we made for the in-town residents, you exactly hit it.
Yeah.
And during cleanup, I stopped, three people, there was two more after we were done with the dumpsters, that came up and said, we thought it was okay to use it, and I said, in-town resident, once that started, the trickle effect just motions, and we've got people from forty coming in here, we've got people out of town here that are coming in here, and like I say, they've got huge, huge piles that they're bringing in.
That, that is part of the issue. Thank you.
So that's why we had P and Z, Town Board, three months discussing this thing, come up with this formation of what we had for fairness.
Right.
And that, I feel is a good fairness and a good spot to be.
Okay.
So then I had a citizen call me yesterday and said, well then, if it's in-town residents only, does that mean the man that's going around cleaning up his property, his people can dump in the dumpsters?
Explain that a little further, so, so the person that lives in the home.
Has a commercial business.
Has a commercial business.
They're going around cleaning up their properties, can they legally dump in the dumpster?
Well, in my opinion, if, if the.
But he's having somebody commercially do it.
I understand that. If the debris has come from this town, I believe, my belief, is that it is allowed to go in the dumpster. Whether it's a commercial person making money to do the job because somebody is handicapped and can't do it themselves, or too old, or they have enough money that that's not what they wanna spend their time doing, and they would rather pay somebody to do those jobs.
So then the guy that's doing it.
Yes, the guy that is.
Can take and go use the dumpster without any questioning.
And the way I feel, I'm just telling you my opinion, Dan. My, my opinion is that yes, they can, if the, if the debris comes from the town, within the town limits, I think it does.
Okay, so it's just vacant lots, they're not using any garbage, water, sewer, or anything. They're not paying anything to the town. They can use the dumpsters. They can use the dumpsters.
Um, the way it reads right now, I believe it says yes, but, Dan, go ahead.
No, we've had circumstances where we've had commercial tree guys come down, and we were told, no. They cannot use the dumpster, they're here as professionalism. When I'm cleaning our properties, I've got my yard trucks down here, we're taking our stuff away with us. And the only time that I'm pulling stuff off, if it's Mendy's house, if it's my house, if it's my granddaughter's house, I'm pulling them and I'm using them from that purpose. But anybody that says differently, I'd like to have them prove me differently on that, and show me differently because we are using our commercial trucks, and we are.
We're not going into that.
Hauling it.
Jill, you have, okay, thank you. Jill, you have a comment?
I have nothing.
You have nothing?
Nothing.
Chuck?
One of the reasons how you determine whether they're an in-town resident is their damn water bill.
No, it isn't. That has nothing to do with it, Chuck.
Yeah, but how do you know they live in town, if you don't get verification that they have a water bill?
Well, okay, so show me a water bill.
Anybody could say they live in town, but you don't know that.
You don't know that, and that's why we have the, the cameras there watching.
The last time we went into that was, they have to show their water bill and prove they live in town.
Mm-hmm, okay.
That's what you have to do in Rapid, too, to go to the dump.
To go to the dump, exactly, or you pay for it, yep. Uh, and you can only use it once, as I recall, one time your water bill works per month. If you have another dump in that month, then you pay for it.
And then you have a certain amount of people that have a water bill, but they don't live.
You're right, they don't live within the city limits.
Very few of them.
I understand that, Chuck, I know there's.
Here they are waving their water bill.
Yep, down here at, at Ferguson Fairgrounds Place, and, and up on the old highway, but it's, it's still, the yard waste sign says what, right now? Do we have, do we have a?
We don't have it, in-town residents only.
And no contractors.
And no contractors, okay.
And that's why I've stopped them, and I asked them, if it, just like I did that day. Where are you from? I have never seen you. I know, and we know, the majority of the people that are around. And if they're hauling a bunch of stuff, and the guy told me, and I said, you know what? The sign says you're gonna pay five hundred dollar fine. You take your stuff and you head to the city dump. That's where it goes. They're pissed off, they're mad, and I don't know how many times I've done that over the years. But anybody that's working on a co- a property that they're developing, that they're doing anything at all, and they're cutting everything down, they have to haul it to town, plain and simple. It's from the residences themselves.
Well, like I said, I, to me, that's, it's not, that was not written for me either, was it? Because that's not how I feel about it. Mark, go ahead.
The sign says no contractors?
Mm-hmm.
What kind of contractors?
Well, see, this becomes another problem. You are a contractor, but you own, but you own your own property. And there, in, in my opinion, this takes maybe just a little bit of brain work. You live in this town, your property is in this town, and as far as I'm concerned, you can put your yard waste into that dumpster that comes from that piece of property.
Okay, I, I gotta expand on that a little bit then.
You're getting that fine line again.
Hypothetically.
Mm-hmm.
Let's say my neighbor is elderly. As a contractor, I say, hey, I'm gonna do this for you, because you can't. All of a sudden, can I not dump her waste there because I'm a licensed contractor?
Well, see, that's where I say too, that's what I said.
Is it the person in town that you're doing it for?
Yes, but as a, but is that sign where you live in the residence? Right, come on, really? You're taking it too far now. It's a matter where.
Well, no, he's not.
You're dumping the material, it's not like you're getting paid a charge or a fee or going over to an.
Doesn't matter.
How do we know that?
It doesn't matter, Dan, it's like he says, it says on there, contractor. So, if you really wanna, you know, you, you, here, here we go in this problem of this attorney says this thing, and, and one, the other attorney feels the other way, and that's how the, they make money. I personally believe, and I would, in your case, if I see you dumping, I wouldn't have a problem with it. And now, here I am, I'm the only one sitting here saying this, you know? But it's wrong, it's wrong. If the property is in the city limits that the debris is coming off of, it should be free of charge.
That was my point.
Mm-hmm.
That was my whole point. It, it, it just don't.
It doesn't drive, does it? I, I agree with you, it does not.
If it's coming from a property within this city, it shouldn't matter who hauls it to the dumpster.
Correct.
We should just be damn happy that it's getting hauled to the dumpster.
It, it actually improves the city.
Yes, exactly.
So, I, I guess I just.
But we were after the tree contractors, what we were, maybe we need to, you know, maybe we need to highlight that, but we've gotten by this long, and been okay, and all of a sudden.
Well, not really, 'cause there's a lot of people are questioning it.
I've got her out of town.
Well, no, it's not everybody out of town. It's, and it's not, and the part of the problem is myself, and I know this. And, you know, I don't care one way or another. I don't care, I'll take my stuff, stuff to the dump, it doesn't matter to me. Yes, it's way more convenient going down here, and it really shouldn't be too much of an issue for what I, little bit I actually take down, but, but if you don't want me to, if, if that's how the ruling comes about, that's fine, I don't care. I don't, I personally don't care. But the whole thing, like he said, that is, that is the honest to God truth. If you are a contractor and you are being nice to your neighbor, or, or, you know, even if, even if your ol- your old neighbor hands you a ten dollar bill or a box of cookies to do the job, you know? That should not, that should not apply. It is, it is yard waste from the town's property, from within the city limits. Yes, Erin?
It's, it's, it's town residents only, in-town property only, in-town, source from in-town property only, property.
That, just one little word change.
And then they're calling you.
It came from physical property within city limits.
How do you prove they live in town?
Well, I know you live in town.
People driving around and they tattle on people, that's how it happens.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
I've stopped some of them and said, where do you live? Oh, over here, but, but, you know, well, they're in town, I didn't know the people, but without some kind of receipt that they physically live here in town, how are you gonna prove it?
But we don't have a box that has someone sitting in there to watch all the receipts.
Right. So, we have, we, you have to kinda go on the honor system here a little bit, you know?
Yes.
Because somebody, they're, we're not always down there watching it. And and I think it's, it's a situation that is too far, too far blown out, I think, it's just, it, it, however.
Simple the way it is. And it's been regulated in a good way. And watched, we know there's people sneaking.
Sure.
We still do, and they always will.
They always, there's always those kind of people.
We gave somebody on Fairgrounds Place permission to dump some tree branches in there.
Uh, you already said that at a meeting, and I know that, and that's, uh, you gave them permission, so there can be no, no.
I mean, you know.
Against the ordinance.
Then this thing comes up.
Yeah, I, yeah, I know, I know. Jerry, go ahead.
A little bit of history on this, in twenty eighteen, it was passed that yard waste collected is limited to persons who have garbage service with the town. It doesn't say whether you live in town or out of town. Yard waste will not be collected for disposal, blah, blah, blah. It wasn't until after those residents decided not to be voluntarily annexed that they went, then in twenty twenty two, and changed it, that it just can be people from in-town or out of town.
But you know, Jerry, the planning and zoning looked at it, and the board looked at it, and they all voted it in.
No, no, I don't have the history, I just give the history of it, and I have the right to give the history, okay?
You can give the history.
And I, and I still have the floor.
Go ahead then.
And, so I'm just saying what the history was on it.
Yes.
I think, I think the, the sign needs to be changed where it says no contractors, it just needs to say yard waste from within the city limits.
Within the city limits.
And not saying who brings it, or anybody else.
Exactly. And you know, this is one of those deals that, that there's a lot of contention about. And, and it's like I said at the last meeting, you have no idea how much time the board members, no matter who they are, this board, or a board from five years ago, or twenty years ago, work on these ordinances. And they seem to work well for a few years, and then a little bit changes, you know, the way people think, um, laws, federal laws, state laws, uh, board changes, the town grows, and then these ordinances that are written are no longer perfect, and we have to re-go through them. And, and this is kinda where we're at with this, and, you know, it, it just, it just is another proof that, that no matter how hard you worked three years ago, here we, here we come to something that becomes a problem. And so, we just need to work through it in, in a hopefully timely manner, and I, I'll agree with that. I think, I think that 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 says yard waste that comes from within the city limits, and I don't, can we paint over that, can we get a sticker over that? Put that on the next agenda, do you all feel?
What's in the ordinance right now, it says yard waste collected is limited to residents who live within the municipal town limits. Yard waste will not be collected, and, and the ordinance itself does not say anything about contractors. So, you can't have the sign being more strict than what the ordinance is. So, you did, the, the contractor stuff just needs to be wiped it out.
Yes. Dan?
And I wanna make that correction, knowing too, just because of the changes. We didn't change it because of somebody wouldn't annex.
Oh, I was gonna mention that also.
That way, and it's always been a situation
Yeah.
where we have never allowed out-of-town residents before the annexation or after that.
That is correct. That is, we have always just.
The ordinance says that.
That's construed.
No, this is what the ordinance says.
That is what the ordinance says, yes. However, the, these changes are not made because of annexation or non-annexations. It is, it is the same thing that I just said. Things change, and three years down the road, you realize, huh, we thought that was perfect, and here something comes up and it's not perfect. We are not perfect, us board members are not perfect. Shame on you. We are not perfect, we never will be perfect, we, we do not have, um, the necessary education of four years and have a political science degree behind us, we don't have that. And in this small town, you're not gonna get that with five members, and, and so here we are, this is what we deal with. And like I said, we just wanna get, we just wanna make it fair, we wanna make it easy, we wanna make the ordinances easy to read, easy to follow, and, and we wanna move forward. And so, with that said, we can put that on the agenda.
And we'll move on.
And one more comment, Dan?
Yeah, it's on the garbage. Last meeting we brought up was also on the garbage ordinance that we have on the cans, because there's nothing specific on the dumpsters, and there's not anything on the fee schedule for the dumpsters, and that's where I said, I could've pushed the conflict and went to another level on it. If we're gonna straighten that out, we need to straighten it out where it's listed on the commercial side of it to what it is residential, to what the cans are, and the fee schedule registered that way also. So, we need to have them match up, and that's what we need to look at in another work session.
For the commercial dumpsters?
Well, or the way our garbage ordinance reads right now.
Right.
Where it does not say that you cannot have a dumpster, and when it was brought up that you need to pay a fee for that, well, there is not a fee schedule for that. So, it was a circumstance on that, we need to make it balance and match, that there is a fee schedule, 'cause there's no way to charge a fee for a dumpster if it's in a residence.
The way I read it too, is that, that the only dumpsters that are even allowed within the town limits are those that come from whoever's supplying our garbage service. And so, that needs to be changed also, because as a personal, why?
Yeah.
Personally, if I am doing a big job and remodeling my house and gutting the thing, and if I don't want Sanders to supply my dumpster.
Even have.
Well, what, okay, so then, then it's wrong in the first place if they don't have them. I just think that that is a, that is a total different subject than, uh, the weekly garbage.
Well, I agree totally.
So, that needs to be changed.
Correct.
Okay, Jerry, one more, and then we're moving forward then.
Yes, the, the ordinance is very clear, and the reason it's clear that way, because what the garbage service is, it's a requirements contract.
Yes.
So, you guaranteeing that contractor that he needs to have the garbage service, whether
Correct.
it's a dumpster, or whether it's, they'll, they get it, and it comes right, it's right in the ordinance, it says, you will not have any residential garbage service at your location that's not paid for through the town contract.
Right, that's what I'm saying, needs to be changed. That's what I'm saying, needs to be changed, because if you are, if you are doing a big model, big remodel project.
Talking about domestic waste.
Individual, yeah.
Yeah, the, the, the ordinance doesn't say nothing about demo or construction, it talks about domestic waste.
Right.
And that's what Dan was placing in that dumpster, and it wasn't provided to the contractor. And the reason we have to make sure we follow that is because it's a requirements contract.
But he was, it was his dumpster, and, and so, and Dan was already getting charged the fee.
But.
Although he did not have the little tote, he was getting charged the fee.
And what Dan said was that he was paying for that.
I'm not talking about, I don't care what Dan said.
Yeah.
I don't care, this stays all, that's all done, over with, gone. It's what the ordinance says and what, what needs to be done to change it, to make it proper.
The commercial dumpsters that are in town, the double ones, Heartland Hair, we do not Bill Heartland Hair, they do their own Corner Pantry, Lazy Art, they all do their own dumpsters, and we don't go after them and make, ask them, where are you getting your dumpster from?
You can't.
I mean, if we're gonna do one person, we need to do everybody.
Yes, correct.
And why would we go ask Lazy Art, where, who are you getting your dumpster from? That's not in the contract to supply a commercial dumpster.
Exactly, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
But if you use it at dumpster as your residential, that's where.
We done.
Jerry, please. Okay, we're moving forward. Um, so basically, this, this kinda needs to go back on a work session, um, for the commercial reasonings, the dump, the big dumpster reasonings.
The big ordinance.
And, and, yeah, so, okay? Next.
Permits.
Update permits.
That's mine. I've been updating some of the permits, and my question is, can I make tweaks and changes to them, or do I need to have that all go through the board if I'm going to do that?
Technically, everything should go through the board.
Okay.
Um, however, the, kind of an easy way is just, I mean, you wouldn't have to be at every meeting to, to do that. If you just, um, make sure that in the board packet, you have the old permit, and then the new permit, and highlight what is changed, and make a quick little note on the bottom, due to, you know, whatever, this needs to be changed for this reason, whatever, something like that. And, and, yeah, and that would prevent you from having to be at every damn work session, excuse my mom.
But they're, they're so fun.
Uh, well, I know, absolutely, we all enjoy them.
And then whenever we updated them, then you contacted the individual, you got the fees for the update, had them paid, so that when it came to the board, at that time, P and Z, they would approve that update and extension for whatever, for exactly what Linda said.
I'm not doing any fees or anything.
Just the permits right now?
If there's extra information, I think should be on there, I also snooped on Hot Springs's
Good.
permit, we have any person engaging in a construction repair or alteration of any building structure, street or sidewalk pavement in the town for which a permit is required under the ordinance of the town. So, I noticed that Hot Springs had all of these contractors listed on their residential permit. So, when they do pull a permit, I wanna get seventy-five dollars for all of those people.
Yeah.
Right.
So, I mean, I'm not trying to be greedy or anything, but.
No, but that's a good.
Okay, so that's what I'll do, I'll, I'll work on it and have them ready.
All right, very good. So, any other permit things, anybody, um, any board members have questions on permits?
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Mo- motion has been made to adjourn at
Second.
Six forty-four, and we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much for your input tonight, for coming, for sharing with us, uh, we need that, thank you very much. And board members, thank you all very much for putting the time in.